Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 16 Tuesday session of the Wolfboro Town Planning Board. My name is Michael Hutter. I am the vice chair and tonight I'm sitting in for Kathy Barnard, who is indisposed. She is the chairwoman of this committee. I have a preamble to read before we get started as follows. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sandinew's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. However, the planning board has jointly decided to proceed with a hybrid meeting format, allowing the public to access and participate in the meeting by in-person attendance at Wolfboro Town Hall or via go-to-meeting at the following login site, https://global.gotomeeting.com/join/918242429. Please call 603-569-5970 or email all one word, planningdirector@wolfboronh.us if you have any questions or concerns about in-person attendance. In accordance with RSA 91A:2, Roman numeral 3, the board tonight has three members joining the meeting remotely. I see two. Susan is -- excuse me, one second, Mr. Planner. Susan is not coming tonight?
She's not on yet. She indicated she would be coming, but she's not here at the moment.
All right. I see currently two members of the board joining the meeting remotely, which a public body has the authorization to allow. At this point, I'll introduce the planning board members by roll call. Present in the room, Vice Chairman Michael Hutter, present, John Thurston.
Here.
Julie Jacobs. Alternate.
Here.
And tonight, Julie, I will appoint you for Brad Harriman, who will not be able to make it tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Only the select board can replace the select board representative, so Julie would have to replace Kathy.
Okay, I will appoint, thank you, Julie Jacobs to sit for Kathy Barnard, who wasn't able to make tonight's meeting. Present virtually are Peter Goodwin.
Here.
And alone in the room. I would assume, Peter, you're alone in the room?
Yes, I am alone in the room.
Thank you. And Vaughn Dugan?
Here, alone.
Thank you. And absent without explanation tonight are both Brad Harriman and Kathy Barnard. Also present in the room tonight is Tavis Austin, town planner. We do not have a recording secretary tonight, is that correct?
We do, virtually. Leigh Anne Hendrickson.
And she's virtual?
Correct.
All right. And our secretary after this evening is present virtually as well. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so I'll move on right away to public meetings. And before we get started with the Plan New Hampshire Charrette presentation, I'd like to deal with the minutes of March 2nd, just to get them over with before we get started. So if everyone would turn to the minutes of March 2, does anyone have any corrections or edits that need to be made on those minutes? I have none. No one else seems to?
I move to approve.
And I'll second that. Thank you, Peter. Peter Goodwin moved to approve. Mike Hutter seconded that motion. May I have a roll call vote to approve? Present in the room, Michael Hutter, yes. Julie Jacobs?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
Present virtually, Peter Goodwin?
Yes.
Vaughn Dugan?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to the presentation by the members of Plan New Hampshire Charrette. I'll hand the meeting over to our planner to make the introductions and to get things moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, in coordination with the Heritage Commission, the town had put together a contract with Plan New Hampshire to do a charrette. Plan New Hampshire is, I want to say infamous with all the love I can, infamous for doing charrettes and they're very helpful. It's a very good methodology of having, in my perspective, a third party listen to all the input and suggestions of the community, the planning board, and people that no one loved Wolfboro dearly, as it's coming up with a proposal or a draft scheme for how to develop either an entire town or a section of town, as is planned as this evening. Tonight, we have Robin LeBlanc, who is head of?
Yes, I'm the executive director.
Executive Director.
Yeah.
And with her is Jamie.
This is Jamie Simcik. He's the president of the -- or the chair of the Charrette Committee. He's with Simcik Planning and Development and came up from Boston.
So we do have Maggie Steer from Heritage attending virtually, and Anne Blodgett from Heritage also attending in person.
You're welcome to join us at the table if you'd like, Anne.
I am quite familiar with the Plan New Hampshire Charrette process, and I recently met with them and went through the PowerPoint that they brought this evening. The discussion, as I understand it, this evening is to see how Plan New Hampshire has adapted or become adaptive to the COVID reality of the world. And then one of the discussions that the planning board and Heritage Commission will need to address this evening is whether or not to move forward with the charrette this fall as was originally planned. Now, it may be that the board decides not to make that decision tonight, but the idea is to be able to have Plan New Hampshire here, make the presentation so that people become more familiar with the process and be able to address any concerns or questions that board or commission members have with regard to the process.
I think, if I may, if the other board members concur, given the abbreviated number of board members present, given the absence currently of our chairperson, I would be reluctant to recommend that this board make a recommendation to proceed with the charrette at this point. I'd like to have a full board, and I'd like to have our chairperson back in chair to discuss it all among ourselves before we went that further -- that far, so just so we have clear expectations of what's going to come out tonight. Thank you.
That's fine. So they were invited here by the planning board in person with their presentation and to address any questions, so I will turn it over to Plan New Hampshire.
Great, thank you. Thanks for having us and giving us the opportunity to talk with you about this. This is a really important program. In the state, we have done 69 community-designed charrettes since 1996. This is our 25th year, so -- and it's ever-evolving, as you will see. So what we're going to talk to you tonight is about our traditional program. And our traditional program, the process is the same, whether it's in-person or virtual or a hybrid. But what I'm going to do is go through the traditional program and show you how it works, and then we'll talk to you about some of the changes that we're doing as far as to address the COVID issue. So as I said, we are celebrating 25 years of working with communities to help you see what's possible. That's what we do. And why is this not? Tab? Sorry about this, folks. It was working a minute ago. No. Yep? Okay. Sorry about that. So Plan New Hampshire is a independent organization. We have a vision of healthy environment communities across the state, and our mission to fulfill that vision is to foster excellence in planning and design and development of New Hampshire's built environment. So a lot of people have visions of what creates, what constitutes a healthy environment community, and our lens is the built environment. And our strategy to fulfill that mission is to share information and inspiration for how community design and the built environment can contribute positively to where we live, work, and play. So what is a Plan New Hampshire Charrette? It is a brainstorming session. It's a brainstorming session of design ideas to address a community's challenge or challenges. And every community is a little bit different. It's in Plan New Hampshire, it's an interdisciplinary team of volunteers, and they come together in response to an application from a municipality, which is what you did. Get closer. Okay. Oh, thank you. And this here is actually a -- this is a shot of -- from a charrette that we did in Manchester, where we actually used blocks to scale to figure out what might work and what might not work. So the process is that the municipality, in this case Wolfboro, identifies a challenge and submits an application to Plan New Hampshire. This totally comes from the community. This does not come from us. Plan New Hampshire doesn't go in and say, "You need to hire us." We don't do that. It comes totally from the community. And then based on the challenge, a team of professionals is built to address that challenge. And then the team comes to town, and will look at the target area, will talk with the townspeople, will develop recommendations, and will present our findings. So for Wolfboro, we had a request to form a vision for that gap corridor. I'm kind of turned around here, but in back of Town Hall, okay, between the traditional downtown, the community uses, and then the critical commercial area that's out kind of down the little hill there where the old train station is. In the application, they said they were looking for enhanced pedestrian connectivity and revitalization and redevelopment of municipal and other properties in the area, so recommendations for that. So how we're going to respond to that, we've already started doing that, is developing a team of, including landscape architects, architects, planners, an historic preservationist or two, maybe a civil engineer, an artist, and other people who may be interested. And what happens is the team then gets together and comes together traditionally on a Friday morning as a team and walks what we call the target area. In this case, it would be in back of the Town Hall here and walking down to the playing fields and all around, and really taking a look at it with our own boots on the ground. These are two different shots from two different charrettes that we had. I believe the one on the left is from Hillsboro, and the one on the right was a park that we did a charrette for up in Bristol. The team walks most of the time. Sometimes it's a big enough area that we need to have transportation. On the left-hand side, we had a trolley took us around. I think that was in Rye. And on the right-hand side, you can see that we walked, and we could see how dicey it was to walk on Route 25. That was in Moltenborough. After the walk around town, around new time on Friday, the team gets together as a team, sometimes with the townspeople, sometimes just as the team. And this is team time to start talking about, what are you seeing? What are you thinking? What do we need to know? And then the team -- and this is a team leader in Bristol. The team -- those are team members that you see, but they're also in there. Those are what we call the stakeholders. So people like the planning board, select board, maybe a library, the librarian, maybe a school department, maybe DPW, whoever is affected by whatever that target area is, will get together in a big circle and talk. It's kind of an open discussion at that point, and that's where we learn things like, where's the water and sewer? What is the zoning like? And some of the nitty-gritty, hard facts and hard data about whatever the target area And here's one of the team members talking further with some folks, some stakeholders. And then on the right-hand side, it's just another shot of team members and the stakeholders at a charrette in Manchester, all kind of sitting together and talking about some of the challenges that they were seeing. Then in the afternoon, and then again in the evening, just for logistics, we have small group discussions with the community members. We get together, we have on the right-hand side here, you can see there's somebody scribing in the back on an easel, and the woman in the coral tank is the leader, is the facilitator for that particular table. And we have specific questions that we ask, and that's to kind of tease out from the townspeople, what's important to them? Why do they love Wolfboro so much? What's important to them about this particular area? And then we find out what would they like to see in the area? What are some of the challenges? And then also, what else do we need to know about this target area? Sometimes there's a lot of people, sometimes there's just a few. The one on the left there, I think there were probably 80 people in that room, so the groups were a little bit bigger. And on the left, you can see that at the end of all of that, after the small group discussions have had their discussions, and there's reports out from each of the tables so that everybody can hear some of the key points from everybody else. And then on Saturday, the team gets together and starts to brainstorm. What are we seeing? What are we thinking? What are we hearing? What do we recommend? And that recommendation is based on what the team has seen and heard in the community from the stakeholders, as well as from the community members, but it's also based on their professional knowledge. They -- most of the people on these teams are -- have been professionals a long time. They're up with -- they know what the latest trends are, the thinking, the forward thinking, what works, what doesn't work, and they know this can be different for every community. But so they're bringing a combination of the expertise of the town with the expertise of these professionals to come together to make recommendations. And there's a lot of collaboration and cooperation. On the right-hand side, you can see that's one of the community members is there. That's something we don't really recommend. We absolutely invite community members to observe and to listen, but it's really team time for them. It's like doing, back when we were in college, you studied, we studied and we gathered information to write a report, and then we wrote the report. And we didn't want people stepping in and adding more information and turning things around and so forth. And that's like the charrettes. We gather all the information on Friday, and on Saturday, we develop the recommendations. But it is open. We do invite people to listen and see that it really is, it's a very transparent process, and we didn't come in with preconceived notions. These are a couple of examples of some of the work that's been done. In this case, you remember those blocks? Well, the blocks were the interim step between the left-hand side here, this is a shelter in Manchester. And then the blocks were an interim step to figure out what could work and what couldn't work on that space. And then on the right-hand side is the recommendation that the team made for what could be done with that space to make it more efficient and to blend in with the existing neighborhood. There's also hand drawing, some beautiful hand drawings. Some of the landscape architects still do beautiful hand drawing. This is all to scale. This is a piece of trace paper that's been put over a map, so it's all to scale. And this is another example. This was a park in Littleton that we did in 2019. So this is another example of the kind of recommendation made visual that would support what the team says that it wants. So the team said, "This is what we see for this park," drew this picture to help illustrate this is what we mean by that. And this is another one, too. More recommendations, what they might look like. Again, on the right-hand side, that's just laying over a map and trace paper, and on the right-hand side, that's a freehand drawing of what a new entrance could look like in the shelter. And then at the end, we do the presentation. We do it very simply at 3 o'clock on a Saturday, and it's done very low-key, low-tech. Set up a laptop, have a PowerPoint presentation, shine it on a screen, as you can see there, or shine it through like we're doing here. And on the right-hand side is a group of townspeople listening to those recommendations from the Plan New Hampshire team. What we're doing now is we're talking about, one thing that COVID has revealed to us is that is for the use of technology. And we feel that technology can do nothing but enhance what this process already is. There's always been people who can't come to the listening sessions, or they can't come to the presentation for whatever reason. And we feel that there could be a good hybrid mix. We're working with the town of Tilton right now to do that. And what we're going to be doing there is we'll have our target area walkthrough and with the stakeholders in person, but we're going to have all of the listening sessions done via Zoom and in small groups. And then we'll get together, and there's a way to do that, so we can still share, we can still do everything, but it's going to be hybrid, and it's going to be spread out more. It's not all going to be packed into two days. And then on that Saturday, then the team will work together to develop their recommendations, and we'll still be able to do that presentation at 3 o'clock, but it'll be virtual instead of in-person. And I think that there's a way that we could do it a hybrid way, some in-person and some virtual for the town of Wolfboro. Did you want to add anything to that, Jamie?
No, I would just agree. I mean, we've learned a lot of things in this last year, and I think we have a very tried and true-tested method of doing this, but there are some ways that, you know, we can make sure more people are involved. And so we'd like to reserve the right to use certain technology to, you know, basically reach as many people and get as many thoughts on stakeholders' views on the community as we can. But yeah, we're very excited. We've been very excited, and I think this is a perfect application for the proposal we were asked to review.
Right. So that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before we start, I'd just like to acknowledge Leigh Anne Hendrickson, as she's here filling the role of recording secretary tonight. We have guests from the town's Heritage Commission. Maggie Steer is present virtually, and Anne Blodgett is present in the room. And I'd like to offer them the first opportunities to ask questions if they have any, so either Maggie or Anne, however you'd like to go first. Go right ahead, and Anne, you'll need to --
Maggie, why don't you go first?
Maggie, Anne suggests that you go first if you have particular questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. First of all, I want to acknowledge that Suzanne Ryan, I think is in attendance as well, and she's a member of the Heritage Commission.
Okay, thank you. I don't see her on my screen. That's the reason why I didn't acknowledge her.
Oh, well, she was listed on my panel there, so I hope she's there and listening. Second of all, thank you for noting that this idea was brought forward by the Heritage Commission when there was discussion about how to reuse the vacant space in the train station and the municipal electric building and the sort of loose connections that could be strengthened between Lainer Street and the downtown, particularly the part of the downtown around the railroad station. We now are really encouraged to see the rehab of the freight house moving forward, and I think that could be a part of the look that we're taking at this whole area. Where I've been part of several Plan New Hampshire charrettes in the past in my capacity as a historic preservation professional, so I know how they work. I think they're terrific. Robin and Jamie are very well-prepared to offer this to Wolfboro, and I think the hybrid model sounds really exciting and an improvement over the in-person model, although it would have been hard to imagine that you could have improved on it, but I think it could be great. So thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks, Maggie.
Anne?
Hybrid does involve walking around and so forth, which, you know, greatly reduces risk. Presumably, a lot of us will have been vaccinated by then.
Right.
So I would hope that we'd still be able to do sufficient walking around because it helps the visual.
Oh, absolutely. We feel that's really important, and even if we couldn't do it formally, we would really have each of our team members come up at some point and walk the area themselves, but they wouldn't get the tour or anything. So we feel that that's very important, so that would need to be in-person.
I mean, I personally think this is the essence of planning, and, you know, as the pressure on density becomes greater here, if we have a plan that maintains the Wolfboro heritage, it'll put us in good stead for many years.
Yeah, that's the idea.
So presumably, in the fall, it would be pretty workable to do a hybrid? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, pending any, you know, restrictions that, you know, we're prepared to stick to the model as closely as possible.
Right.
And is it up to the planning board and the Heritage Commission of Wolfboro to bring out the troops and rally the troops and publicize, or do you help us with that?
Well, as I understood it, and one of the reasons, you know, I think I caught Mike off-guard tonight, was suggesting that the decision might be made this evening, but the decision needs to be made sooner than later so we can spend the summer building the base towards a participation of any substance by fall. But yes, I think that would largely be on, you know, the chamber, the town, the committees, the boards, myself, et cetera, getting the word out that the charrette was coming.
Right. And every town does it differently. It just depends on how you get the word out. We have a checklist of things that the town is responsible for.
Agreed.
So it's just, you know, things like lodging and food, and when do we need snacks, and the kind of space we need, and all that sort of thing. So there's all of that. But yes, once the green light is given, it still takes another three to four months to really get ready for a charrette. So that's what the town would do. We don't do any of that.
And as you know, this is, there's a huge amount of summer residents who care deeply about the community and the changes and so forth. So if we did it in September, that would be more inclusive, I would think.
That's your, really, your decision when you really want to do it, and then we would link that up with our own schedules. But we had been talking about September, I believe, anyway. So yeah, and that would work. The other thing to consider is if we do it in the traditional way and then do some of the hybrid, if we do it in the traditional two days, we would need to, the team would have to spend the night, so you would have to put up lodging or offer lodging for us. And so that's another consideration as far as the summer people and what's going on, leaf peeping and all that. So what's going to be available for the team to stay? So that's usually between 12 and 15 people at the most.
So if we, I mean, the sooner the better on that because Wolfboro's booked up.
Right, right. So once you nail a date, if you decide to go forward with it, probably should secure a date as soon as possible. And that helps us, too, for our team members, to be building our team so they know that, on whatever that date is, that they've got that tied in.
One other thing, you know, just to add on to what Maggie said, we have these things that are moving along, so I think that makes it more important to do sooner rather than later. So would you agree, Maggie?
Yes.
And to the degree that you're able to provide the charrette team with that information, you know, we're happy to take a very holistic view on what's going on in your community. So if something's able to be provided during those two days, we'd be happy to review it as well to include it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Questions from the board? John?
Thanks for coming tonight. I've got a couple of questions. And your team of 12 to 15, they're the people that come, they stay here, then they draw it all out. They're the ones that draw the maps and so forth here. Does any of your team members do a pre-video, post-video, like a CAD? Like if you were in a car, you could envision yourself driving down through that neighborhood as your new look?
We've never done it, but that's not to say that we can't. We don't have the capability to do that, but if you all want to do something. We were, actually talked about that with Matt earlier, talking about what if there was some kind of a walkabout video done of the target area? That could be also a good marketing tool to get people interested in coming. But no, we don't. We're all volunteered, the organization, the team members are all volunteers. I'm the only paid staff person at Plan New Hampshire, so this is only part of what I do. I would love to do more, but something like that, we think is very interesting, but we don't, at this point, have the resources to make that happen.
Okay.
But if you do-- But if you do, go for it.
There, there is a, a company in New Hampshire that can do that, at least the pre. And then that could be, I haven't done the costing on this. It may be equal to or more than the charrette itself. But there are ways to get 3D modeling through a drive-by model. And then how that would be adopted or adapted to put in the proposal would be another animal. But there would be a way to put some real-world drive-through abilities.
John, other questions?
All set, thank you.
Julie? Peter, Vaughn, questions?
Is there a checklist of materials that you need? Like 1-inch, 20 scale drawings of the town? Do we get that so that we have that in for you before you get here?
Yeah, Jamie's going to be the leader of this charrette and he'll tell you everything that he needs as far as maps and things.
Yeah, so, so I'm co-leading this with Brian Pratt from Fussin' O'Neill and we generally do a request for plans, CAD drawings, GIS. You know, we'll, we'll be giving Tavis a run for his money to see what he can help us pull together. So yeah, I mean, yeah, in short, yes, we have that list, but it usually comes down to kind of what you guys have and what you've prepared to date.
Okay, thank you. One question for the planner. Have we gotten a proposal from Plan New Hampshire for this project? With the sorts of details that were emerging tonight? The, the degree of hybrid versus in-person activity that's going to be likely to be possible on the first day?
There hasn't been a breakdown of traditional versus hybrid presented yet, no.
Do we have a proposal from them yet?
Well, we have the contract we agreed upon. One of the things that we were talking about when I met with them before is to see what the Tilton final contract looked like and I could make that available to the board when that's completed.
The reason I ask is that, given the abbreviated number of members present in the room tonight and the absence of our, both our chair and our selectman's representative, I'm a little reluctant to go very much further than we have gone tonight, hearing the presentation and having a chance to ask various questions. What I'd like to do is to take the results of the presentation tonight, the minutes thereof, together with the proposal that we have from you, the Tilton information that you'll be supplying to us, which will give us an idea of the balance between hybrid and in-person, put it all together and then bring it back to the board for a further discussion. I understand, and I'm sure the board all members understand as well, the need for, for not urgency, but time. If you are looking at a three to four month lead time and we want to do it in the summer, now is about when we should be thinking about doing something. It's getting you guys scheduled. So I think, you know, the board members are aware of that. We have some constraints on us right now, which are unexpected. And so it's not going to, we'll not be able to do anything tonight. Possibly in a couple of weeks' time, get something organized. I would like, I think it would be useful if this board sat down with the Heritage Commission, who are spearheading, at least in the beginning, this activity. And so we, all of our interests and needs are understood. We know where we're all coming from. We can make the right request of your organization for the right kind of charrette that we're looking to get done. So with those things in mind, you know, I would ask you to be patient a little while longer. Let us get our ducks in a row and we will be back in touch with you as soon as we can. Does that seem like a fair plan?
It's fair to me.
Sounds good.
We want it to work for you all.
Yeah.
Understood, understood. But we, we also need to be able to work with you. And if you're busy and, and we don't want to lose an opportunity to take advantage of your services at the same time, we have to know, I have to know exactly what it is that we're getting and how it's going to work in our situation, especially with combination of, of virtual and in-person. That's a bit tricky and there has been some discussion. Ann, had a question?
Mike, I have a question. This is Suzanne.
Don't we have a proposal, Maggie, from pre-COVID times?
There is a contract, yes.
We have a contract apparently, Ann.
Yep. I think Suzanne wanted to add some comments. Mike Cotter, can you ask her to speak too?
Sure. I was, I'm sorry Suzanne, I did not, I do not see you on my screen, so I wasn't aware that you were here, but go ahead, please.
Yeah, yeah. The Heritage Commission has been talking about this for quite some time since last, oh, a year, more than a year ago, we walked around with, with a part of the team. I understand they're going to need lead time and we are too. So could you, in your thought process, make a date certain that we would all get together and try to finalize a decision so that we could have, if we do go forward, we could have this charrette when the summer visitors and summer residents are here? Number one. Number two, in the introduction, it was said that the town identifies the challenges and submits them to Plan New Hampshire. My question is, who do they consider the town? Who is the town that is going to identify these challenges? And then what weight are those challenges given in their thought process?
The town has already identified them. They were in the application that was submitted to us about a year and a half ago. And as I outlined earlier in the presentation, it was about taking a look at that, that area in back of the, the town hall and also making it more pedestrian-friendly and then taking a look at the buildings that are there. So those are the challenges that were, that were, that they identified, that they wanted us to, to take a look at.
An area included in that?
Well...
The, the old station?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And Lainer Street and the connectivity to the playing fields and the rail trail.
And we do take that into consideration, certainly, and, and address that. But sometimes we broaden it, but sometimes we look at it and go, hey, look at this and bring that in too. So if you want to take another look at the application, you probably have a copy of it, don't you, Travis? Travis, somewhere?
I, I'm looking for the submitted copy now, yes. But yes, I'm sure we have.
I think, I, I think, I think we should because it was a year or more past that, and things have changed slightly, some for the better, some not so.
Well, and I have, I have a, I have a suggestion Suzanne. Why don't the Planning Board and the Heritage Commission, why don't we get together with the contract and thrash out what has changed, what hasn't changed, what we want to do, what we don't want to do? Get our expectations clearly outlined, transmit them to Plan New Hampshire. Let them understand exactly what it is that we want so that we're all together on the same project page and then proceed further from there. And in order to get that done, we, our two boards should meet together. And it would seem to me that a work program, a work session day would be better than a public hearing day for that kind of activity. And that would put us out to April 20. That's the next work session day that this board has that I'm aware of to get together with the Heritage Commission. Would that April 20 be pushing the envelope really hard for you guys?
That's literally...
I would say yes.
May, June, July, August, go.
That's just about on time? Just about on time.
I think, I mean, we were just talking, Rob, I mean, we think, we think that's fine. I think as, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm going back to one of the earlier comments about planning around a busy time for, for the town and just making sure all the pieces can be put together. But if, if the board and the Heritage Committee thinks that's fine, that's, we're happy to work with them.
Yeah, that's, it's not like, that still gives us time to review, to review the, the application, the revised application.
Okay.
And to say yea or nay. And then once we give the green light and once we've got a date set, then we can, we can figure out the details as far as the hybrid versus whatever. That has to be done first though. Do you want to do it in two days or do you want to spread it out like we're doing in Tilton? So...
Are those parameters understood in the contract and the proposal? Or do we kind of have to come back to you to ask those questions?
We wrote the proposal way before COVID was even on the...
So the proposal is purely in-person?
The proposal is purely in-person. It never occurred to us to do a hybrid.
Then we, then we do have some work to do.
Yeah.
Ann, one question?
May I ask when the Tilton, when is the Tilton charrette taking place?
That's in June, which is considerably earlier than, than this would be. So things are going to change a lot over the summer, I hope. So this may be...
And what's, what's the timeframe for that, Robin? How, you said you're spreading it out.
We're meeting on a Friday, the 14th, to walk the, to walk the target area with the team and meet with the stakeholders. And then the following Monday, I believe in the afternoon, once in the afternoon and once in the evening. We're, in the afternoon, we're going to have a Zoom meeting of residents and then break into small groups. On Wednesday, we're going to do the same thing, but it's going to be in the evening. If it's not in the, it's once in the afternoon and once in the evening. I can't remember which is which. And then on Saturday, the team is going to meet virtually and some team members may meet in-person, but that will all be off-site. And then we'll do a presentation at three o'clock on Saturday, as we always do. So it's spread out over more time rather than packing it all into the two days.
Okay. I would like to propose that chairman of this board and the chairman, the chairwoman of the Heritage Commission get together and think about a plan to meet here on April 20, the two boards together, and discuss the charrette, how to proceed. And perhaps the two chairwomen can get together privately in advance and thrash out the sorts of questions and the sorts of areas that we need to work on. Tavis?
I'm just sending out to the Planning Board, Maggie and both addresses, and Suzanne, the application that went to Plan New Hampshire so people can start looking at it.
Good, thank you. So I, I will suggest that the board schedule for the work session on April 20, a meeting with the Heritage Commission here in this room to discuss...
Can I speak?
I beg your pardon, Peter?
Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
I have this feeling that this reticence to move forward is perhaps not needed. And that I think the, the sense of most of the stakeholders is that we want to move forward through this. And I am therefore concerned that, you know, the middle of April, when there is going to be a decision made, may be too late for our process. And so I, I worry about that dual meeting because of the fact that I think that it may be just a rubber stamp. It may not be necessary. And it is just a delay tactic which we don't need. And so, and, and I would end up saying that we should move forward with this. And it may end up being that it could be done at the next board meeting, which is earlier in April. And I just, I think that this is something which is not needed.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Ann?
Next week, is there an opportunity for those members who were not in attendance tonight to come join us?
But they would, they would not represent the full board. They could not vote on moving forward with this.
Yeah, I know there are procedural things. Is there a way for the Planning Board to meet off at our meeting?
I appreciate, I, I'm, don't misunderstand. I am not attempting to delay this at all. What I'm attempting to do, Peter and Ann, is to make sure that a full board can consider a contract that was first let before COVID struck, which is going to be run under very different circumstances than it was when it was originally let and is being discussed by a partial board tonight, absent our chairperson and absent the, the selectman's representative. I'm very reluctant to take any action, to expend money, to commit, to commit this board and the town to proceed further with a project that is really unfinished and would be approved by a, a short board. I think that, that would, we've heard already from Plan New Hampshire that if we approve something on April 20, we will not be pushing the envelope and losing an opportunity. So I don't get a sense of urgency here. I, I would, I would urge the board to err on the side of caution and conservatism. But I'm only one board member. If the board feels otherwise, they should let us know and we'll proceed accordingly.
I mean, as to the specific, as to the specifics of your question, Ann, yes, the Planning Board can meet any night they notice in, in that manner. So it's conceivable that, you know, if the Planning Board wanted, I could put together an additional notice so that it would be a Heritage Planning Board joint meeting. Not to say that that meeting would be the meeting where a decision was made or not, but that might set the framework if there's concern about waiting until April 20th.
Again, I, I'll say again, if, if the presenters of the charrette do not feel an urgency caused by an April 20 date...
I'm just trying to answer all the questions.
I don't see one. Ann?
Well, Mike, what I'm going to suggest is...
Peter, one second, one, one second, Peter, Ann is speaking.
I was basically adding on to what Peter said, which is waiting a month. And, you know, when we've already done a lot of work on this in anticipation of doing it before COVID. So, you know, I, I just, you know, not sure how efficient it is to wait a whole month.
If, I, okay, I will not, I will not belabor the point. I don't feel a sense of urgency here. The, the presenters haven't given me that sense. Had they given me a sense, perhaps there'd be a need to, to move urgently.
Well, I think the big issue is booking rooms and doing the logisticals, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
And those, those might fill up. So Tavis, what do we have on a next, next meeting plan? What's it looking like?
Next meeting is filling up, but it shouldn't be terribly arduous.
What, what do we have in the way of public hearings?
We have a, a minor subdivision, a site plan, and maybe one other. So it's going to be at least two, probably three public hearings.
Yeah, we have, we have a, our next meeting is going to be filled with site plan and subdivision. So I'm not sure we can squeeze it in on the 6th. I don't think that would really work. It looks to me like the next open meeting that this board has on the regular schedule is the 20th. We can always schedule a special meeting. If there were a sense of urgency, we could do that. John?
I wouldn't mind scheduling a special meeting. I am kind of with Peter here. Let's, let's continue while the discussion is ongoing here and we can just keep walking along and putting things in place. And if we, if we stay together, then we can finish this off and, and follow it through. I, I'd do a, I'd do a special meeting with a, with a committee and the Heritage.
Julie?
Can I, I guess my statement is that I, in many ways, I support Mike saying that, you know, we, we don't have a full board and we need to talk about this. At the same time, I think that there should be some discussions by the two groups who are involved here so that the bugs in the system, if there are bugs, are worked out so that we're happy and therefore there may be communication with the people who are going to be presenting this. So that basically when we get to April 16th, it is a rubber stamp saying, yes, everybody's in agreement, let's move forward. And I, I think that there is a way to do that. I, I think everybody seems to be in agreement, so I don't think there are really any issues. And if the presenters are not worried about that as a date, that may end up working.
Thank you, Peter. Julie?
I don't feel the urgency, honestly, because September is a lovely month and a lot of people are still here. I think it could even jump over into the half of October. And that wouldn't be bad for people to get out, walk around. A lot of people are still here. The ones that would be very interested have the opportunity... The ones that would be very interested have the opportunities to stay. The ones that go and come, they can pick any day that they want to leave. I, I don't think waiting a couple of weeks is going to really hurt us that much. And it will give us the opportunity to read everything again. I haven't seen any of this. You said you've been at it for two years. It'd be nice for everybody to reread it, get together and chat about it, especially with all the changes.
And I, I'll confess, I have not even seen this contract, which is why I asked in the beginning, my first comment, do we have a proposal? So I've not even seen it and I, I would be very reluctant to vote tonight to move further forward. Vaughn, we haven't heard from you. Do you have an opinion on this issue?
I, I certainly do. I think that there is a bit of urgency and I would really like to get this going. But I think we could wait until April the 20th, I gather. But I think we should all have had a chance to review the documents. Maybe we could have them emailed to us, the, the contracts and the tilted version. And I, I think honestly that we will not know what September looks like regarding COVID anyway. I mean, it's not going to change that dramatically in a month. So we cannot absolutely cross all Ts and dot all Is. We don't know. So there has to be some flexibility allowed.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with, with you, Vaughn. I, I, as you all know, I don't see the urgency. I don't need, I don't know if we need to do a vote on this or just have a sense of the board. It looks to me like board members are, more board members are inclined to make a decision on April 20 at a joint meeting with the Heritage Commission. I would suggest between now and then, as I did already, that the two chairpersons of these boards get together privately and thrash out some of the groundwork so that when we do meet on the 20th, we're not starting fresh, that we'll at least have some work behind us already done. If that is agreeable with the board, I'd like to leave it at that, that we will get together with the Heritage Commission on the 20th of April here in these rooms, starting at seven o'clock, to discuss the proposal and make any changes that we feel are necessary and, and have the planner get them to Plan New Hampshire at that time. Proceed further from there.
I have one logistical question, and that is, do the 12 to 15 people need to be in the same hotel so that they can meet and talk?
It's ideal, but we realize it doesn't always happen.
And then in Tilton, are you staying for a week?
Oh, no, no, no. We're just going up for the day on the, the first Friday and the rest of it is virtual. So we're not going to be onsite at all after that first day.
Okay, may I ask the, the planner to be sure to get all documentation that you have available on this project to all members of the Planning Board and the Heritage Commission by email? Maggie, I'll be in touch in the next day or so by email to thrash out some details with you and we'll take it from there. Put it on your calendar for the 20th to meet with the Planning Board to get this finalized.
Can I add one thing here?
Thank you.
And my, my point is that I believe that if the Planning Board and the Heritage.
You're fading, Peter.
United on this front, that is a very useful thing.
I'm sorry, I could hardly hear anything you said, Peter. You were fading in and out.
I'm going to suggest that if the Heritage Commission and the Planning Board are on board with this particular event, that is a very good thing.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
You'll be hearing from us as soon as we possibly can. And thank you, members of the Heritage Commission, Maggie, Anne, and Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, a drive-through committee update. That's me. We have a flyer which is ready to go, to be included in the electric bill mailing. However, I heard this afternoon from the town manager that the town has a, an electric bill policy. Electric bill policy forbids any mailings with the electric bill that have anything to do with political solicitation and that, in his opinion, our flyer kind of crosses the line and would not be allowed under the 2018 electric bill policy for inserts. I argued with him and we agreed that he would get attorney's opinion. I'm waiting now for the attorney's opinion. Assuming that the attorney comes back and says, yes, it's okay, the flyer would then need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Their next meeting is April 7. If they approve it, it doesn't go out until the next mailing. And we had a tally date of April 30. So I'm thinking that we may have to push the tally date back into May in order to get enough time for people to get the mailing and work with it and get it back to us for us to do the tally in time. So this is a work in progress. Nothing can be done until we hear from Attorney Puffer. Once that's, once I've heard his opinion, then the drive-through restaurant group can get together, redo the flyer if necessary and/or get it into Brenda's hands for mailing in the next available opportunity. That's where we stand currently. That, this is a hurdle that was unanticipated. I didn't know about it until this afternoon. Any questions on that one? Anne?
They might call online, so I wouldn't get it. How many people pay online?
There's going to be a way of dealing with that, and I'm not sure exactly how that is at this point, because we haven't discussed it with Kathy and with Susan yet. But we're working on that. We understand that people do pay online. Susan pays online, for example. So we know that's a potential hurdle. But the number of people paying online compared to the number of people who get it in person, I think is small, but we'll find out. And it'll be run in the paper. The, 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 and it's also going to be on Survey Monkey. Thank you, Julie. So we'll, we'll have, we'll have several different ways of getting it on.
Michael?
Yes?
If, if, oh, shoot. Do you have a backup plan if they come back and say, no, you can't, can't put it in the electric bill?
Yes, the backup plan, as Julie reminded me, we have a Survey Monkey set up for this and we will be announcing the solicitation of interest in the, in the newspaper.
Good, good, great, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, the next item on the agenda, any other questions from the, the board? Next item is the Conservation Subdivision Regulation Discussion, about which I know nothing.
At the last meeting, there were a couple of discussions about discussing in the works, work session setting the Conservation Subdivision Regulations, why people weren't using it and recommendations as to moving forward.
Yep.
My recommendation is to move that until you have everyone present that would be relevant to the conversation.
Move it where, I'm sorry?
Move it to a, a future work session where everyone is present.
Do we want to make a date certain or we just want to move it out?
Let's go for 4/20.
Also on April 20?
Yeah.
All right. So move that one to the April 20 work session.
I mean, I, I'm perfectly willing to put some information out prior to that meeting so that people can be looking and digesting, but a presentation would not be.
Until the 20th, that's, that's fine. Yes, if you would get information to us on that. I understand it's only been used once since it's been written?
Well, it's been used more than that.
Okay.
Not to spend too much time on it. There are a number of ways that applicants are required to do it by regulation. You know, if minimum lot size and minimum parent parcel size align, then the Conservation Subdivision is required. But there are a number of ways that people can request exemptions through the planning office. So it's been used a number of times, but most often it's been in play and then applicants have found an exemption from it.
Okay.
So it's, it really doesn't work the way it's written, is the short answer. I'll explain why in more detail at the future meeting.
All right, then we'll, we'll deal with that on the 20th at the work session on that date. Next item is the Revised 2021 Work Plan, including the implementation of the 2019 Master Plan.
This, this was added by the Chair a couple of days ago. I'm not sure what was going to be spoken to on that point.
I think all she wants to make sure is that the implementation of the Master Plan is included on the work plan.
So noted.
All righty. The next item would be a Viewshed Discussion. I'll leave that with Peter.
This is something which the.
Peter, your, your, your audio is gone.
I don't know how I deal with that. I, I'm not muted.
That's a little better.
The issue is that the National Resources Committee said the Master Plan.
Peter, you're, you're totally broken up now.
Can they just be leaning into the mic, closer to the mic?
I could, I could try. Does this help?
Yep.
That the National Resources Committee ended up saying that we should have something about Viewscapes. I think at the last board meeting or one before that, there was pushback from having any ordinance, having any regulation associated with it. And so therefore, this is more just an informational type thing.
That's better.
Which might end up being useful to people. And basically, it's, it would be something that says, you know, be a nice neighbor. You don't want to see theirs. You don't want, and you don't want them to see yours. You don't want them to hear your stuff and you don't want to hear their stuff. And so these are things which we need to deal with. There are things in our regulations such as dark sky complacency, which can be part of the issue, but anyway, those are part of the normal regulate.
My understanding from the last discussion of this was that we're going to be looking at putting together a How to Be a Good Neighbor informational piece that the Planning Department could put out. There was quite a bit of discussion about not having the Planning Board put it out. But that the Planning Board members would have some insight. I suppose to move it forward, what I should do is agree or offer to work with Peter and Vaughn and others on coming up with a PR piece that the department could put out to help encourage neighbors be good neighbors in Wolfboro.
Does the board feel this is a, an activity that the planner and the Planning Department should be involved in? Or do we have any concerns about?
Well, the, the other option would be to invite Planning Board members to put together a document and I'm happy to publish it.
No, I understand that. It's not, it's not a matter of the agency, it's a matter of the appropriateness.
I thought we went over this last meeting, that we were going to have a location in Terry's office where there was different types of informational items that the public could use to better their building practices and their, just their all-around outlook for preserving the character of Wolfboro in any fashion that they might be able to. So I think that's what we talked about last meeting and.
Okay.
There also has been Viewshed and ridgeline cutting on the agenda for years. It's, it comes and it goes and we haven't really done anything. So I think, and we've looked at various examples. So I think that we should come up with something because it does seem to be of interest to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Okay. So does, Tavis, are you able to sit down and start crafting such a document and then present it to the Planning Board for its comment, maybe also to the Conservation Commission?
I don't know if I'm ready to start crafting something. I think what I'll do is put an email or correspondence together to Conservation and Peter and Vaughn and pull together a consensus of thoughts and see if that leads to a draft document for people to consider.
However it's done, that would be just fine. Is that agreeable with the, with board members?
There, there's at least one draft that's circulating. I think that we could just, everybody maybe share information so that it's not starting from zero.
Do you, can you, can you point to that draft?
Well, the one I saw, Peter started.
Okay, so that, that would be the things you may want to consider, documents?
Yes, and Kathy has that and she asked whether it would go out to the board, but that was probably late yesterday and it didn't happen. So we can get that out to the board so that there can be comment.
Okay, then, then, Tavis, you have it under control? All right, thank you.
Good to go.
Moving on, TRC report.
TRC report, there was a formal TRC meeting approving a gunsmithing and limited firearm sale in town, 8 Annegans Lane. There was a site plan review for Eastern Propane. That will be on your 4-6 agenda. It's not propane there proposing in the Pine Hill area, immediately adjacent to the propane storage tank area, a diesel fueling depot that will be available to the public. So not a gas station, but a canopy over two pumps, four pumps, however you want to think of it, two verticals, four handles, accessed off of Wicker's Drive Extension. That was full attendance by all of the TRC at that meeting, including Lenore Clark from Conservation. No major concerns were raised there. The other is a minor subdivision, a two-lot subdivision in the Village Residential District, and I'm not envisioning any problems for the board in addressing that moving forward.
How many did you say? Eighteen?
I can't hear you.
Did you say three or eighteen?
Two.
Two.
A two-lot subdivision.
A two-lot subdivision.
I heard eighteen also. I got scared. Good.
Remember, technology is good.
Two is better than eighteen. Okay, anything further on TRC?
And that's it for TRC.
All right, thank you. Impact fee, where are we on the impact fee at this stage?
Well, you and Kathy and I met and discussed the correspondence to date.
Right.
With Mr. Mayberry. I put together a communication to Mr. Mayberry, furthering those points with regard to potential changes to Part Two of the existing contract. And last update from him, Tavis, thanks for your message. I'll take another look at Part Two, budget and scope, and make sure we can accommodate the point you listed. Most of what you listed needs to be addressed through changes to the ordinance, but informed by the research we do on enrollment relationships to the Wolfboro housing stock. So we are yet to hear back a final answer on the changes required, at least financially speaking, if any, to Part Two of the contract to proceed.
Okay, so that is under control?
Yeah, it is under control.
All right.
Full steam ahead.
I'm sorry?
Full steam ahead.
Thank you. Lighting Committee Report. John, take it away, please.
All right. The Lighting Subcommittee was formed to address concerns about the types and uses of lighting in Wolfboro. Concerns of regulations and new technology uses were also raised by members of the public. Currently, there's old technology and new technology lighting regulated through site plan and general regulations. Our committee is making recommendations to transition to a single set of regulations and definitions, which is now in the site plan. We want to come back with future recommendations based on survey data and committee input. Dark skies, starry skies, and merit preservation. Lighting can complement architecture and provide beauty with character at night in Wolfboro. Safety and character coexist through the site plan application process. Safety and character coexist through the site plan application process. Town lighting survey finds a point where we request the municipal electric department and the rec department heads to meet with the planning board to discuss subcommittee findings for future lighting fixtures going forward. Primary focus on the wrecks, parks, and paths. And anybody, Brad's not here tonight, so with that data, was a survey that compiled for the subcommittee. You want one of these? And if you go down through your collection of data, you'll see a type on the left-hand column, a location, and a sign of a good or bad concern. What types of regulations, whether or not this particular location would be a general regulation or a site plan application regulation. And then you have definitions. Consequently, right now, any general regulation place would fall under general definitions, but there aren't any general definitions. The only definitions are in site plan. So that's the transition aspect. When we look at the purpose and intent, we see that each one has its own particular signatory, and what we look for the most is whether or not it affects the dark sky. And in the end, we can see the compiled results of whether or not it's beneficial and supports a site plan, or it's contrary to it. And what you see on the first page is the downtown from Pickering Corner to Soul Road, and the second page is from Pickering Corner out to Christian Ridge, Ledgers, and Ohm. And it's... Thank you.
Yes, any questions from board members?
I just have a comment. Because it's winter, I think the lighting that goes out onto the lake at night hasn't been considered. I know boating on the lake, there are certain areas you can't even approach a dock because you cannot see because the light pack on a wall is so strong. So it's just not, it's not safe. And I think, you know, we could do a little survey come boating season.
So with that, Vaughn, we first had to decide as a committee what we were going to go after first. And the non-residential and multifamily were the ones that had the start for us so we could get the ball rolling and how we wanted to fit those site plan regulations. And then we need to look at the regulations to fit the site plan because, like I said, in the general regulations, there are things that need to be looked at, just as what you described.
And some of those are commercial properties.
Okay.
I have a question with the ratings. Because there's the concern, there's good and bad, and then there's yes in one of those columns. And what was the criteria for putting a yes in the column?
The criteria for the yes, good or bad, comes at the end where you see a site plan support. So in an instance where it was a good concern, you look for the yes and then go all the way over to what the support is. And this particular instance, I see a yes, and it says it's shielded. And other ones say, you know, the other parts of certain aspects of the lighting were, you know, lighting adds character and beauty to our town, so we look for that architecture or appeal that it gives, peaks and so forth in the lighting. And if you saw warm colored lighting or architecture or down lighting, those would be supportive. A lot of times when you see the contrary, you see glare, and you see the more modern types of lights, which are the white intense lights. Basically, you go from warm orangish to blue fluorescent to white LED as the extreme goes.
I guess I would end up in many ways supporting your thoughts about what is nice and what is not nice. But I think that there may be some issues with how that information is presented, that information is derived, and then what is the scientific basis for that other than just any?
And we're working with Tabus to... We have determining factors right now that have allowances for alumens, and that's how the measurement is made and can be determined. The basis of the study comes down to two parts. The good part is that most of the applications that go through site plan and later on in life, they're non-offenders. They still have the same characteristics that they presented in site plan. The contradiction comes when you have older businesses that don't need to go into site plan, but they are using older light bulbs, and then they're transitioning to newer stuff. So some places, you'll see older ones that still look good, and then you'll see intense ones that are going to need a relooking at and decide whether or not that's something that the town wants to support. But right now, there are mechanisms for those to be metered. But, you know, as we are a town of, you know, we aren't a town of going out and sending the codes officer to view all the lights in town to say, what a bad, and what, we are a community of, you know, concerns. So that's what our committee did. We looked at those concerns, and we're willing to go out and look at other people's concerns also.
Because I worry about this, which is a public document with those, all those things added, and what, who's good and who's bad, as to whether this description of yes or no, good or bad, is something which we really can produce without some real scientific background. And if you are going to say that this motorcade is going through town too loud, you have a decibel meter, which ends up saying, yes, that's 120 decibels, you can't have it. And so I guess I worry about the view for the judgment of some of these places with their place of name as being a real issue.
I think that, if I may, John, what, I take this document as a working document, not a finished presentation document, and certainly isn't something that was going to be presented to the planning board on which we're going to start writing an ordinance. So this is a working document. Yeah, there are qualifications, yes, no, good, bad. But I'd have those same sorts of qualifications in a working document that I produce too. It certainly wouldn't wind up in the finished form.
Yeah.
If I was, if I am the owner of ABC restaurant, and all of a sudden this document, which is public, says that I am mad, I end up being able to complain about that, I believe.
Oh, I understand. If I were the owner of a document, and I, or a restaurant, and I saw this document and it called my lights bad, I'd be annoyed too. So I'd get in touch with the planning board, and they would tell me, this is a working document, not a finished document. And this is a personal impression by the chair of a subcommittee working on lighting, and it's not going to wind up as being an ordinance. I don't feel the same concerns. This is a working document.
Yeah, the intent, as I saw the committee using this document, if I may, is to, it's not good or bad. It's really more of a sense of, do we believe that the regulations that were in place either now or at the time of approval of those lights were adequate in providing the lighting that, so is the lighting that you see meeting the spirit and intent of where the board was trying to go? And if the answers are consistently yes for a certain area or no for a certain area, then the scientific study could come in to determine, okay, what makes, just as Peter was saying, what makes this bad, bad? Is it the fact that it's now 10,000 Kelvin? Is it the fact that it's, you know, 48-foot candles at the property line? What is it, what is the metric? And then the regulation that could come out of that would be, okay, well, based on this, the following lights are good, the following lights are bad, so we need to establish a metric to hold future site plan applicants to. So at this point, it was... Go ahead.
I am concerned about the idea that someone will see this and say, oh, they have bad lights. I'm not going to patronize them. And so I think it needs to be very clear as, as Tabus suggested, what the criteria was, that this is just associated with the present regulations, and it is not that these people are bad.
I think the men is will make that clear, Peter.
Yeah, this is a personal document, Peter. I made it up. I went around town on my own two feet, spending an hour on, an hour and a half on each page, and another two hours to write them up. And I thought I put in a lot of time at 8:00 at night to try to get some data so everybody else can see something. And I'm sorry if I wrote bad in there. Maybe I should have written something else. But I'm willing to listen to you, and, but I just thought I'd like to provide some documentation so that the board could have an understanding what we might want to consider. You don't have to consider it, and I'm not making anybody consider it.
This, as far as I know, this is a working document inside a subcommittee of the planning board. It is not something that's been presented formally to the planning board as the final product of the lighting subcommittee. Lighting Subcommittee is continuing to work on this, so we will simply leave it there. The lighting Subcommittee will continue working, and they will eventually provide the planning board with a work product that we can all discuss. So I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, unless, John, you have anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And that's the Filterbed Road Committee Report, which again is me. We have met several times. In brief, these are the follow, the findings that we have made so far. Filterbed Road is not a town road. That was a surprise, but it is not a town road. Second, we're going to be looking into the wisdom of rezoning the area around Filterbed Road commercial. We have not gone further than to think that that might be a way to go. We have not canvassed the people in the area to see how they feel. We have not canvassed the businesses in the area to see how they feel. And we have not discussed this with the planning board either. This again is an internal document from the Filterbed Road Subcommittee. We would like to become an official Subcommittee of the Planning Board, and that's going to take a vote of the planning board. And I would like to make that as a motion later on tonight. And I'd also like to expand the membership of the Filterbed Road Subcommittee, as it will become, from the three members of the planning board to three members of the planning board and two members of the public to be chosen and then later on approved and appointed by the planning board. So there would be five members, two members of the public, three members of the planning board currently, the current members of the planning board. So I'm, that's the report. Anyone have any questions on what I have mentioned thus far? And seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board adopt the Filterbed Road Study Group as a planning board Subcommittee. Membership to be five. Three members of the planning board, or alternates, as currently constituted, and two members of the public, names to be presented at a future date to the planning board for appointment. Do I hear a second to that motion?
And who are the current members?
Me, John, and Julie.
Second.
Taken in by Peter. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Begin with the members present in the room. Mike Hodder, yes. John Thurston?
Yes.
Julie Jacobs?
Yes.
And members present virtually, Peter Goodwin?
Yes.
Vaughn Dugan?
Yes.
Okay, that will make it unanimous. Thank you all. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Stormwater Management Regulations Committee Report. Do we have one?
Well, that's you and me and John.
Me?
No, Brad.
Oh, Brad.
Brad.
So, I mean, I can do a quick report on it. They have met once. They're going to meet again on Friday of this week. Discussion so far have centered around going over those stormwater regulations that were adopted by this board in 2014. And they are also reviewing the document that I presented to the board back in January. And this Friday will be a discussion as to how to move forward with next steps. Also, what came out of that meeting was a discussion that Kathy brought forward about incorporating as appropriate or in tandem, if you will, the steep slopes regulations. They are largely, or they are two sets of regulations that are little-known, and I will say cautiously rarely-used, even though they're on the books. So the point is to make them current and usable so that applicants can use them accordingly. And there will be a further report following the next meeting.
Okay. So there'll be a further report on the six, is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. We're scheduled to have another stormwater meeting. Are we? And if it's only the two members, or do we know when? We don't know when we'll have a other participant, so should we, should we prepare to hold off on that?
I will leave that to the board and the committee. I'm, I think you could move forward with the membership that will be available, but if the committee would rather wait, you can do that as well.
Who's on your committee? You, Brad, and Kathy?
Me, Brad, and Kathy.
You proceed on.
Okay.
Definitely, let's proceed on. That would be my advice.
Okay.
Don't let time pass by. Okay, anything further on Stormwater Management Committee?
That's all, thank you.
Short-term rental committee report?
I'm on that committee, and Kathy's the chair. I wasn't prepared to make a...
All right, I'll pass over that one.
Yeah, it would stand. They haven't met since the last report to this body.
Okay.
We'll be meeting next week, I believe. Yeah, next Monday.
All right, very good. Zoning amendments adopted, 3921, discussion. That was an article or an item posted by Kathy. I'm not sure what she meant by that. Are you?
I have no idea. Candidly, I think it's just to remind the board that all of the warrant articles that were recommended by this body to the town meeting were passed. I'm going through the process of getting the, I'll say, the code books updated. I'm also looking at finding out costs with getting full copies of the code book so that we have at least, at least multiple sets of current copies in the office and available to board members for use.
Okay, I'll...
The only thing I would add on to that is that the parking amendments that were approved included some other updates that will need to be done in short order to the site plan regulations. And I'll be meeting with Mike this Friday to go over those, just to compare notes. I anticipate coming back to the 4-6 meeting or 420 meeting on the outside with the recommended changes to site plan regulations so that they can move to public hearing. Because right now, we have regulations in play that are not fully in effect as the site plan hasn't been updated. For the board's edification, there is no project coming on 4-6 that would trigger application of the parking regulations. application of the parking regulations, so we're okay for 4-6.
That's good. I was curious about what Kathy meant, so what I, on this item, so what I did was to take the zoning amendments in last, in earlier this month's warrant and compare them with the language that we had approved through public hearings here, and I found one thing that concerned me, actually, two things that concerned me. We approved changes in the terminology to the architectural design guidelines in the ordinances, and we changed the way they were referred to, to reflect the new terminology. Those changes were recommended to the warrant, they never showed up on the warrant, unless I made a big mistake. So, I would ask the planner, if you would, just to go through, compare the articles in the warrant with the articles that's recommended by the planning board through public hearing to the warrant, to be sure that all of the ones that were recommended to the warrant actually showed up on the warrant, because this one, as far as I can see, didn't.
Article number four.
Article number four is?
Is the change from voluntary, voluntary design review guidelines to architectural design guidelines, or architectural design standards.
Bear with me one second while I look at that.
Article number four was, are you in favor of adoption of Amendment Number Three as proposed by the planning board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to amend Chapter 175. So, it was 175, 106. Note 2, 175, 107, special exception uses note 2.
Note 2 doesn't refer to architectural design standards. Note 2, in my copy of the ordinances, does not refer to architectural design standards in either 106 or 107, and Note 2 in 116 and 117 also don't refer to architectural design standards.
Hold on. I'm looking at 175, 106 right now, Note 2, architectural design standards. I got to go one by one here. 175, 107, Note 2 is voluntary design review guidelines.
107 or 117? Oh, you're looking, okay.
I've got to go through every district.
Tavis, rather than hold the Board up, let's you and I talk about this on Friday?
Sure.
Okay, and if it is an issue, it can be dealt with, and if it isn't, then we'll just excuse it, and we won't waste any more time on this one. The only other item I have, which did not make the agenda but should have, is a quick legislation update. The bill in the House that was going to allow for tiny homes was voted inexpedient to legislate on a 10 to 9 committee vote. It's been moved to the floor, it more than likely will die there. The bill that was mandatory four-unit zoning was also voted inexpedient to legislate on a 10 to 9 committee vote. The bill that was to allow for a bond to be posted prior to appeal of a site plan or subdivision approval was voted inexpedient to legislate 11 to 8, but the minority voted the bill ought to pass. It was sent to the floor, and there will be debate on that. More than likely, it'll die, but it is possible that it could be revived on the floor and go for a positive vote. So, of the four to seven bills that I've mentioned the last time I made this presentation, three are dead, and there are no new bills to report. And that's all I have for the agenda. Moving on to public comment, do we have any members of the public who would like to say something at this point? Ann?
You're a member of the public tonight, man. I feel very important.
Well, there you are.
Oh, gee.
Okay, seeing none. Any other business to come before the Board?
I have one question.
I'd like to thank everybody who's on a subcommittee or on a study committee for doing a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Seconded.
Is there any site visits coming up for the planning board for applications?
I haven't received any special use permits, no.
Okay. Any other business to come before the Board? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vaughn, all in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Present in the room, Mike Hodder, yes. John Thurston?
Yes.
Julie Jacobs?
Yes.
Present virtually, Peter Goodwin?
Yes.
And Vaughn Dugan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Tavis.